Good evening and welcome to the September 14th meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals, a volunteer advisory board appointed by the city commission. Will staff please conduct the roll call.
Turpinain?
Here.
Work?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
Holder?
Here.
McReynolds?
Here.
And we did hear from Chair Vanden Humberg that she is not available this week. Thank you.
Thank you Pete. For each public hearing, public comments will be accepted during the times as indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members that wish to provide public comments over the phone can call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period. They will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting to the board live and will no longer be able to leave a recorded message. Are there any announcements or changes to the original agenda?
No announcements or changes tonight.
We'll move on to the acceptance of last month's minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve last month's minutes as provided.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying aye. Voice, vote to approve. I'll now explain our procedure for tonight's public meeting. For each request, the secretary will read the application into the public record. The applicant or representative will then have 10 minutes to provide their comments. Following that, the public is invited to step up to the podium, starting with others in favor of the application. Clearly state your name, address, and present your comments within a three-minute time limit. Following all comments from those who wish to speak in favor of the request, we'll invite those who wish to speak in opposition or otherwise comment to do the same. Next, any calling comments will be aired for the board and audience. After this, we'll close the public hearing upon request. Once the public hearing is closed, the board will then conduct what is called a finding of fact, where the board states what they feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact. Therefore, the first vote you hear is not the ruling on the request, but the finding of fact. Then the board discusses the request in order to determine the ruling. The board reserves the privilege to ask questions of persons who have already spoken, even though the public comment portion is now closed. Once discussion has ended, the board will move on to a roll call vote. A full board consists of six members with four votes required to grant a non-use variance or use variance. Will the secretary now read the first application?
Absolutely. An application for a variance, oh, sorry, an application for variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance have been filed with the zoning board of appeals by Inovo Development Group LLC, and they're requesting a use variance from Appendix A, Chapter 4, Section 4.2, Q3 to authorize a residential occupancy of the ground floor level where it is not permitted in the commercial neighborhood district. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you Remi. Will the applicant please step up to the podium and explain the request?
I don't, his thingy's not on.
There we go. Should be on now.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Swentertan, and I am an attorney at Christ Enderly in Portage, Michigan, and represent the applicant, Inovo Development Group LLC. I'm here with one of the members, Trey Allman, and also Pat O'Brien, who's probably known to all of you, is a Realtor who's involved and was listing the property. The property, of course, is at 1321 Southwest Netch. I have a few minutes, but I'm not going to use too many of them because I think the staff report and that was produced is exactly accurate. I think it does describe the situation very well. The property is a home, a 1,591 square foot home. There is no interest in the property. The tenant is leaving True North. A financial concern is leaving, moving. There's been no interest from any commercial users, you know, in that neighborhood, Park and West Netch. It is a beautiful home. There is, it is a, we have a purchase agreement to sell the home to someone who's going to use it for residential purposes. And obviously, as everyone knows and is explained very well in the staff report, this area, of course, will be, will be subject to, and the zoning is going to change. It's currently commercial neighborhood. It's going to go to the Live Work One District, like a lot of the properties in the Vine historic neighborhood. It will therefore then be subject to a lot of multiple uses, residential and commercial. This is a perfect use of this property, of course, as it's been historically used as a residence, and that's what the buyers are going to do. It's very difficult for us to have a commercial user have any interest in the property. Of course, the timing is pretty good here because of the fact that the city has been working on the rezoning area, different areas in the community, as everybody knows. I think that most people are in favor of the LW1 and 2 districts. My understanding is last Thursday, September 7th, the planning commission may have made a few tweaks, but at least this area is going to right be, remain LW1, and which is fabulous. And of course, the city commission has not taken it up, and of course, until they approve it, it won't be law. It won't be part of the zoning ordinance. I don't know when that's going to happen, whether that's this month, next month, November. But we wanted to take advantage of the, you know, try to get this deal done, and so we decided to apply for a use variance. As, as Mr. Eldridge makes note in the zoning board of appeals staff report that I've referenced, apparently in July, there's an error, it says August 10, somebody, a property at 621 South Park Street came before this board and had a similar, a similar request. The zoning was CO rather than CN1, but the result, I think, or the request was the same, you know, given the, you know, given the timing. So, we would respectfully request, again, a use variance tonight to permit residential use on the ground floor, which is not permitted now, and hopefully, hopefully the zoning board of appeals sees fit to approve our, approve our variance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would staff like to make any comments related to this request?
Yes, Attorney Swentertan covered quite a bit of it, but again, as the staff report alluded to, the special circumstances are really the, the longer-than-projected timeline for getting this rezoning through. This, this rezoning that the city staff has been working on for, well, since the initial release in early February, is hundreds of properties. So, it's a realignment of, of many commercial properties along various thoroughfares, and in this case, West Netch Avenue going through the Vine neighborhood is the, is the focus. And it did, it did clear the planning commission hurdle on September 7th. The next scheduled date is in front of the city commission for first reading on October 16th. So, that's, that's the initial reading, and then a public hearing will be held, hopefully the next meeting after that. But, you know, but again, this is, you know, it's, it's a process that we are, you know, so we're looking at, you know, we're looking at early November, best-case scenario right now. And as was mentioned, this is a, a change from the commercial neighborhood one zone, which allows for residential, but only on the second floor and above. So, only upper floors of a, of a structure in the zone are eligible for use as residential. The ground floor is to remain commercial. And that is the exact level of inflexibility that we are trying to do away with by this change. And this is, this rezoning is also occurring because the CN1 Zone District will not exist after, after we get these updates approved. We're actually removing the commercial office and the commercial neighborhood zone districts from the, from the ordinance completely, and replacing them with the Live Work 1 and Live Work 2 designations. So, where, you know, based on, based on the appropriateness of the land use there, of course. And so, so the other comments I just want to mention, we obviously have heard many times about the, you know, the calculations that have been made as far as our, our shortage of housing units, and this variance, like the, the 621 South Park Street that was before the board back in July, you know, showed the demand for additional housing units in the Vine neighborhood. And, you know, so this, this is a staff-supported variance, I just want to make that clear. And it, you know, it, we feel it's, it's more than appropriate with the fact that once the rezoning occurs, you know, that, that will essentially align the 100% residential use with the new zone district, the Live Work 1. And that is all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you Pete. I'll now open the public hearing to invite those to speak in favor of the request.
Me?
No. Oh. I won't be long anyways. My name is Max Tibbetts. I currently live at, on South Park, and I'm one of the people trying to purchase the home at 1321, I and my husband. I've been in Stewart for years and years, and we've redone 31 homes, and I no longer physically can rehab. And this house is small enough, it's turn-key, and it still keeps me in historic, and it's really ideal for residential living. There's a lot of stuff going on in that area that they can use my expertise to try to clean up, but I can't do the rehab anymore, and it's why we chose that house over other ones. The current owners did a phenomenal job in the work that they did with it. So, I'm hoping you pass it because I want it to be my home. Thank you.
Thank you Max.
Excited to see Max and Jeff down just a few blocks on, on West Netch. I think they'd be great for the neighborhood, more residential, and they keep an eye out and they know what's going on, and they're not afraid to gather some people and let's get it fixed.
Hi, I'm Jeff Shuda. I live at 916 South Park Street, and I'm the other person hoping to purchase the property on Southwest Netch. And I think the highest and best use for that property is residential and not commercial. So, I'm hoping that you will make that change. Thank you.
Thank you Jeff.
Hello, I am Chelsea. I currently leave kitty corner to the property in question, and I really believe that the brightest and best use for that property would be owner-occupied housing. Commercially, the business in the areas are really suffering. Elements just asked for fundraising because they're behind. Swift is being pushed out due to all sorts of vandalism that's happening, and Taco Bobs keep shortening their hours. So, the value of having owner-occupied housing and neighbors that care makes such a wonderful difference.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Pat O'Brien. I am a business owner in the Vine neighborhood. I'm also the listing agent, so I do have a interest in making sure that the sale goes through to be sure. However, I believe that the highest and best use for this property would be a joint use of either residential or commercial. I've been in the Vine neighborhood over 20-plus years. This house, in essence, looks like a house. When you go in it, it acts like a house, and of all the buyers that looked at it, 99% of them were residential buyers. I believe that the highest and best use would be to allow a residential use in this house, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Donna Carroll, and I live at 435 Park Place. My husband and I have lived there for 49 years in Vine, and Max and Jeff have been great neighbors in recent years. I know they've done good work on South Park. They've become part of the neighborhood, and I think it's just really, the fact that this was a residential house at one point is, it, it just makes sense for it to be, to have it be flexible in terms of its use going forward. So, I think they'll be contributing to our neighborhood and to the stability of the Vine neighborhood.
I'll now invite those who wish to speak against. None? Any call-ins?
We have no call-ins.
Thank you Pete. Any further discussion from the board?
I guess my question is more for Pete than anybody. What is the difference between LW1 and LW2, or what would be those differences? What would be the difference between them should they come through?
The, the LW1 is a little less intensive as far as the listing of the types of commercial uses that are allowed. I mean, they both, they both allow for the residential, for 100% residential, but, I'm trying to think of concrete examples here. But it's really, you typically, typically are going to find, the LW2 is going to be, if it's a larger lot size, that could accommodate more intensive development, you know, and more, and more mixed use, then that would typically be the higher intensity, Live Work 2 versus the Live Work 1. And of course, the property we're talking about tonight is not very large as far as its, its overall square footage. So, yeah, I don't, I'd have to pull the list to give you land use examples between the two.
It was, it was more curiosity than anything else. Um, the other question I suppose is for you too is, so at some point, this was obviously a house, I mean, it's a house now, like, that's not changed, but at some point, the zoning changed and kind of, once it changed hands, it became a commercial building. Is that kind of the way it went?
Correct, correct. It, it was, yes, it, it was built as a residence. What was the date here? 1901. So, it, you know, it's, you know, it's a historic structure, and it was, I want to say 2019 that this went through site plan review to be converted into office use, and that's when the parking lot was built adjacent to it. And so, it then became, you know, a, it was no longer classified as a house, it was now, it was now a, a commercial office. And so, a, as, as many people have seen throughout the Vine neighborhood, you have older homes that are in commercially zoned areas that have continued to be, you know, residentially occupied, and they, they never made that transition. So, they're, you know, so they're, you know, that, that is legal, you know, it's technically legal non-conforming, but it's not until that change occurs that, that we then ran into this difficulty with properties in the commercial neighborhood zone district, and then the other was, it, it was a commercial office zone property in the Vine neighborhood that was the same, same kind of situation. They wanted to add a residential unit on the lower level and not even convert the entire lower level to residential, but it still triggered a, a variance before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any more comments? Can I get a finding of fact?
Yes. Finding of facts today were, basically, we had no call-ins, and we had four responses, one email, three letters, you know, and approval of the changes that they would like to see. As Jeff had mentioned earlier, you know, in July, they had, you know, we had another person come upon and requested use variance for the same reasons, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a second for the finding of fact?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those, again, opposed, please signify by saying aye. Finding of fact is approved. Are there any other comments?
I just think the house is just beautiful. It's meticulously maintained, and it's just, I'm really excited for you guys. It's going to be good. It's lovely.
Um, I just, this makes it sound like a backhanded compliment or something, that we should approve it just to be consistent because we've done them with the chiropractic office a couple months ago, and we did it with Charlie Martell's office last month, and basically for the same reasons, and it would be inconsistent to not give that. Now, all that being said, I would still approve it, I'm just saying, for consistency's sake, we need to, we need to approve this.
I'd only be approving them when they're owner-occupied. That's the only, when I, but I, I'm, I don't know, I think the Live Work situation, when they be taking commercial buildings and letting residential be downstairs, that's, I like that it's owner-occupied. That's what I think is the continuity that I'm looking for. Is that what you're referring to?
No, not necessarily. I'm, I'm just pointing out the kind, the, that was like two months ago now on the chiropractic office. But last month, it was... two months ago now, I'm at chiropractic office. But last month, it was the, the, is that the 621? Is that the Martell old office building?
That's the one Jill and her?
Yeah, that was, that was, yeah, what was in the staff report, that mentioned August 10th, but really, that was July 13.
Whatever, whatever it was that we did.
Yeah, okay.
What is time? It all blends together. But, no, I mean, I think that's an important thing, and I'm not discounting it, but we've, we seem to have approved them on the thinking that the zoning's going to change anyway. People need to get to work on it now, or else they have to wait till next year, so let's just do it. And I say, for consistency's sake, we at least need to approve it. But our underlying reasons are for why we're being consistent a certain way, I don't think has to align, as long as we're all kind of agreeing for consistency.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have to say, in the entire time, and for transparency, Jeff and Max are my backyard neighbors, and no way do I feel that that conflicts with anything. It actually helps. As they stated, they are good stewards of the neighborhood. They submitted letters. I think this is the most support we've ever had for one single application in regards to in-person and written responses. And of all the written responses and attendees here tonight, I can honestly say that I've worked with nine tenths of them in some volunteer or community enhancement capacity, and I feel that the best characters of the Vine neighborhood are represented here today. And Remy can speak to this as well, being on the Vine Neighborhood Association Board. You don't often see very active roles, and to have this many neighbors show up in response to this application, I feel really bodes highly for the applicant.
Thank you. I'll be voting for as well. Can I get a motion?
Oh, motion to approve the variance? Is that what we're looking for?
Absolutely.
I move to approve the variance in the application and all of the extra language, not the extra language, all of the specific languages in the notice of public hearing.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
Okay. Pete, will you take a roll call?
We'll start with Turpinin?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Puller?
Yep.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes.
Variance approved.
Get out of my backyard.
I was just saying, you'd be motivated by them being bad.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, could you please sign, sign in on the sheet if you spoke, so we can get that into the meeting minutes correctly?
Oh, I know, like Rachel.
You can always, when they go to walk away, you say, can I get, would you please give me your name one more time? So you can always do that, yeah, so that way, that way you can, you can write that down, that these are the people that spoke.
Okay, gotcha. All right, now I know.
Yeah. I know, it was just like a barrage, and I'm standing over there, and I'm like, oh my gosh, they're just like rapid fire. We're not, we're not even there for two minutes here.
That house is so pretty. Oh my gosh.
Remy, would you please read in the next application into the record?
Excuse me. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance have been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by Enterprise Lacing Company of Detroit LLC, and they're requesting a dimensional variance from appendix, excuse me, Appendix A, Chapter 7, Section 7.2G, to authorize signs mounted on the roof of the existing building where roof-mounted signs are prohibited. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the applicant please step up to the podium and explain your request?
My name's Ashby Donahue. I'm with Enterprise, Enterprise Rent and Cars, or what everybody knows us as. I am out of Commerce, Michigan. I work at our corporate office, covers the state of Michigan for real estate. We're looking to get a variance on the sign. It's anywhere on the building facing Cork Street is the old Burger King-style roof, if you look at it. So it's almost like a residential roof. So there's nowhere to mount the sign except on the, I guess, the, I don't know what direction it would be. There's a flat surface area where we could put it, but we were looking for a variance to put them up on all three sides of the Burger King roof, on the flashing on the top. We've already, we've already switched out the roof from the Burger King blue to black. The only place for us to install a sign on the building is on the right side or the very front and the sides on the top of the flashing above the shingling. I think, are there renderings in the packets that you all have? So that's what we're looking for.
I'll be timed to ask him this, but I got two different types of renderings. I have one with more classical, square, enterprise facade, and then towards the back, sorry, I flipped the other way, is basically you just took a Burger King and stuck the sign on the top.
Correct.
This is what it is now, the, or what it's intended to be.
Yeah, so the second one that you just showed with the signs on top of the shingling is what we're looking for. The original rendering is what we did conceptually when we went through the special use process when we purchased the property. Creating that boxed-off look is very cost prohibitive for us. And also, the signage requirements, the length of the thin fascia bands that go on it, with the amount of square footage that's allowed, is, they'd be very thin. It would look pretty unusual. So that's what the smaller boxed signs on top of the roof will look a little more conventional. They look a little more our typical tray dress, and, like I said, creating that boxed-off look with the condition of the building and the way it's built is just cost prohibitive for our project. We wouldn't, something, not something we could have put in our budget.
I mean, I'd ask him more questions if he, if he wanted. Um, so I think the staff, I'm on, good. I think the staff report is suggesting, instead of three signs, one sign, essentially to replace the original Burger King sign that was on the roof. I think I'm understanding that correctly. Why is that option not, is, or is that an option that is workable in this situation? It may not be ideal. I'm not asking it's ideal.
Yeah, no, it's definitely, it's a viable option for us, if one sign is what we can get approved. I mean, ideally, I mean, it makes the most sense there. It's where the, it's on Cork Street where the customers will see. We already have our pole sign also, which will attract customers. And if we are able to put the one on the front, I assume we'd still be able to put one on the flat surface that meets the typical signage requirements. So that would be, I mean, I think that's fair for everybody.
Oh, I guess if you meet the typical signage requirements, you wouldn't even be talking. Pete can just do it, right? Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Pete.
I mean, the flat surface, but there is a flat surface where we could install one without having a variance. We're looking for one on the road. That's what I mean by installing one with typical sign requirements.
Oh, okay.
Where the circle Burger King sign used to be.
Sure.
At their entrance on the side.
Is there a square footage amount per sign?
Well, the square footage amount is based on each, each individual facade. So in this case, you're looking at the, you've got the, you know, the east, the west, and then the south, and the south faces towards Cork Street, and it's two square feet of sign area per foot of wall length. Maximum size is 200 square feet for any one wall sign, but.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the allowance isn't in question. It's, it's the placement of the signs only.
Yeah, we've already been, we've already had the fascia band look. We already started permitting with the city. That's how we ended up in this section, so.
Okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I don't know.
Okay.
And just, just for the record, can you give us your full name again?
Ashby Donahue.
Thank you. I know we've spoken many times. I want to make sure we had it clear, so you could say who spoke.
Would staff like to make any comments?
First thing, I'll turn my mic on here. So, in this situation, so normally, because I know we've talked a little bit about the site plan review process. So, so normally, if a project requires a variance, that would be handled on the front end. So, so if, if we had known in advance, we could have, we could have, you know, had them go to the board before the issuance of permits and site plan appro, well, I should say, before site plan approval and then the issuance of permits. But in this case, there was a, a design change. There was the facade. So what I was trying to show in the packet is that there was a, a plan at one point to box in the sloped roof and create these, you know, parapet walls that would allow for a legal wall to attach the wall signs. And, and then that was, that was changed, and so that's, that's what brought up, you know, the need for variance well after permits were issued and, and the site construction started. So I just wanted to clarify that. But in, so in the packet, you have, you know, the original rendering showing the, the wall extensions. You have a Google Street View of what it looked like when it was an active Burger King site, and shows where the Burger King signs were located. And then you've got the, the version that they're now requesting the variance for, showing the three signs on the, the west, south, and east surface that is at the ridge of the roof. So, and as I indicated in the staff report, you know, staff has looked at, looked at this many different ways. Since this Burger King was built in 1980, there's never been any signs mounted up on the crown of the roof where Enterprise would like to place the signage. There, there were, however, signs mounted on the lower shingled roof. That's where the Burger King channel letters were placed. And I did look extensively, trying to figure out if that variance was granted to allow for that back in 1980 or 1979, or sometime around when they built that, that building, and was unable to find any, any variances. But it, but it, you know, fast forwarding to 2023, you know, we look at the ordinance and look at signs like this, and this is clearly a roof-mounted sign, which is prohibited by the ordinance. So in our staff review, we looked at the building. We looked at, is there conforming alternatives? You know, our, our response to that is, yes, there are conforming alternatives, clearly on the east and the west sides of the building. The south side facing Cork Street, that one's a little more complicated. It already had quite a few windows and a glass entry door, and in order to, part of the modernization of the building involved putting in a window wall. So now there are literally windows all the way across the front of the building. So there's no wall surface. There's just the, the pitch of the roof coming down, the window wall, the entry door on the, would that be the, the southeast corner of the front? So, so there is, there is a hardship in, in sign placement on the south, south facade, and staff is acknowledging that, but staff, and, you know, could support placement of a sign if it's no higher up on the roof than where the Burger King signage used to be. But staff is not in support of placing roof-mounted signs on the east and west sides of the building.
And y'all wanting, y'all want it to be a roof-mounted sign?
Yeah, I mean, attaching it to the roof over time, we found that doing this creates roof leaks over time, deteriorating, it's puncturing.
You know what? Could, could, could you please come back up?
Yeah.
Mr. Donahue, and that way, because, because I know our viewing audience at home can't hear anything unless it's in the microphone.
Gotcha.
So, go ahead.
So, we would prefer to attach it above the shingle line, to the shingle. We've found in doing this, you know, I've done this all over the country. It's puncturing into the roof over time. It's going to lead to, you know, it's going to deteriorate the roof. It's going to avoid warranties. It's going to create leaks. So we would want to mount it directly to the flashing above the shingle line, not to puncture the brand-new roof system that we just put on there to replace Burger Kings, because Burger Kings is completely deteriorated.
They want it here?
No, I think what they want is the crown all the way around the sides.
Correct.
Look at like the building right side, the building front, and the building left.
Oh, like this one?
All the way, this one. Go, go all the way around the three sides. And I think, just to clarify what Pete is getting at, I think, is on the building right side, they could put a sign here. They could put a sign here somewhere. It's only on the front that they don't have any wall space here, so it's either on the crown or on the roof.
Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you.
And the, and the roof seems acceptable because Burger King was already doing, it's sort of a, don't ask for permission, ask for forgiveness, it feels like. But it's not that they created it. It's more of the, well, it was already there, so, so it, it doesn't seem wrong to let them do it, too. But you don't prefer to do that, that part I got.
Correct, yeah. We prefer not to attach it directly to the shingling, especially on a sloped roof.
Yeah. I have nothing else to say.
So, well, I was just going to say, so, yeah, it is, it is a situation where they're trying to work around this existing roof system, you know, with this, with this, you know, pitch, you know, extending down and not leaving a whole lot of sidewall on the building, especially on the south face. I, I'd have to say that I, I don't, I, I don't see any difficulty with attaching it to the, the shingled roof, and I'm, you know, I mean, it's unfortunate that this, this change in the design came along, and, you know, work commenced, but the plan for the sign placement, you know, somehow transitioned while the work was going on, so that the roof has already been reshingled, and now we've got an issue with sign placement. But, I mean, it's, you know, you can mount signs on the roof. You can, you know, flash it properly and address, you know, you know, water leakage concerns. So, you know, Burger King was quite effective at doing that at a lot of sites around the country, along with other businesses. So I, you know, it can be attached to the shingled roof, is what I'm trying to say.
Pete, I have a question. So looking at the Burger King building, there may be shingles there, but it looks more like a parapet wall, and the roof is actually a flat roof, which is up several feet from that. Is that right?
Yeah, there, there is a, a section of flat roof that is behind that, that ridge, you know, that, that little ridge wall, if you want to call it that. There is a flat roof area back there, and so that ridge wall is, is concealing the mechanical units on the roof.
Right. So I guess my concern is, you know, if you're looking at the Burger King signage, it's along the face. it's along the face of the building, not actually on the roof, right?
Well, one could argue that, and I'm starting to wonder if, uh, back in 1980, if there was, if that was how they interpreted the Burger King channel letters and.
It's not the roof. Burger King doesn't look to be, the Burger King sign doesn't look to be on the roof. It looks to be on the parapet wall. And I'm just concerned about setting a precedent to put signs on a roof. That's all.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I, I understand. Yeah.
I thought you were going a different way with that.
Me too.
You went a harder way than I thought you were going. No, I get it.
Yeah.
Um, because I was going to argue, well, no, if that area is covering any part of the building, it's a roof.
Yeah.
No, you were, you were going in a slightly different direction, which is good.
You don't consider that to be the roof?
No.
Oh, this is the roof.
The roof is up here, and that's where the drainage is.
And this is what?
That's a parapet wall.
What's it called?
Parapet wall.
Parapet wall, okay.
But in this view, it shows that comes well back over the building. It probably covers, I, I don't know, 10 feet, 12 feet, something like that?
I don't know when you walk on a roof, you know, it's, you can tell it's a roof.
Well, I live in an, we all live in Kalamazoo, I imagine. So we all live in old houses.
Yeah.
But our second floor has like, it's sort of set down, so when you go up, there's like a four-foot-high wall, and then it comes over. So I know there's a roof above my head. I don't consider that a wall.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's what I would consider this as roof.
Okay.
Parapet wall roof.
Right.
Nevertheless, I was going to ask, are you putting in a street sign? Did I hear that again? Okay.
We've already permitted that.
Okay. So that, I mean, that's going in. It'll be visible no matter what happens. You'll at least have a sign on the street. Okay.
So you have a street sign, and then you plan on putting another sign on the, um, on the flat?
Yes, sir.
Part of the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you've got a lot of signage.
We like signs.
Okay. All right. I'll now open, uh, the public hearing and invite those to speak in favor. None? Any opposed? None? And we're going to check for call-in comments.
One moment.
While he's checking that, will it matter that the subject line of the staff report says 3651 East Cork and the first paragraphs, it says 3651 Stadium Drive? I, as an attorney and somebody who, if this goes the wrong way and winds up in court, I wonder if that's the kind of thing that needs to be corrected on the staff report, so.
Good catch.
Okay, we do not have any call-ins at this time.
Thank you.
Cork Street, yes.
But when I was originally reading it, I saw stadium, wait, what are my?
We have a location on Stadium Drive today. That's probably where the confusion is. Yeah.
It's only in the staff report, though.
It's not in the subject, right?
Okay. Thank you for catching that, though.
If, if the motion is stating the correct address in the action, then the board is taking is in regard to the correct address, we should be fine.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I have another question for Pete. Pete, um, the square footage for the signage, I want to get back to that. He likes signage, and he's going to have a sign at the street. He's going to have a, another sign on the flat surface of the building. Does he exceed his square footage at that point, or?
No, no, I mean, in, in this commercial zone district, you can have wall signs technically on all four sides of the building if you wanted. As well as the allowance for a freestanding sign. So, so, yeah, Enterprise is looking to have signage on three sides of the building along with the freestanding sign.
Okay. That's all for me. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Can I get a finding of fact?
Sure. That was loud. Uh, I move that the finding of facts for 3651 East Cork Street includes all of the information included in the notice of public hearing, which we talked about. We've talked about this public hearing notice probably in the attached documents, probably more than the rest. Um, that is dated August 30th, 2023, and the agenda packet staff provided. Thirteen notices of public hearing were sent. Zero responses were received. We did have a gentleman from Enterprise come and make comments. Um, I'm sure that staff got all of that down. That's all I'm making is the motion for finding of fact, unless we need something else.
That should be good. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a voice, um, vote for all those in favor?
Of the finding of fact?
Of the finding of fact.
Aye. This is an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? None opposed. Can I get a motion to approve, or?
Well, do we want to discuss it and, because you?
Discuss it more?
Discuss it and maybe give some reasons for our underlying votes?
Yes.
Is that what we're wanting, Charlie?
Thank you.
A little bit?
Yes, yes. It's, uh, we're at the deliberation point. Where certainly you are free and may discuss, uh, your vote, or, uh, reasons why you're voting a particular way, or, uh, simply have a discussion to determine how you're voting.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to start? I feel like I've run my mouth enough so far.
I was taken out there. Uh, I'm completely blind, just so you are aware. But, uh, I was completely instructed as to the visual impairments that might be needed for additional signage as you've stated. And I don't feel that there's enough visual obstruction to require the signage be placed at the top or peak most portion of the roofing, especially being that there is a road sign in place. And with the staff's suggestion of, uh, possibly putting an additional sign to the south that directly faces Cork, which is where, uh, the business interface would see the most, uh, direct contact. I could see that as a feasible possibility, but with the, uh, application as currently stated, I have to vote no for the fact that I don't feel that there is, uh, enough impedance or encumbrance to meet, uh, some of the requirements we have to meet.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, I happen to agree with Jeremy. Um, and I'll be voting no as well.
I, I'm going to jump.
No, go ahead. No, you go.
I was just going to say, I think there are reasonable alternatives to, to what is being asked for that, that would allow for adequate signage. So I would also vote no.
I kind of agree with, uh, how everybody else is feeling. Uh, so, yeah.
I think that what's most, um, I, 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 this part here where it says the special circumstances that this particular building was, is for Burger King. And that's the reason why the, I, am I understanding the reason why you want to put so much signage around? Because like, this is Burger King building, and you want to just make it clear that you're an Enterprise, and that's one of the reasons why you want so much signage around it to be able to make that distinction for the consumer. Um, and I do think that that's important. Um, because Burger Kings are like Burger Kings. They look like Burger Kings, and y'all want to look like Enterprise. And so I'm not mad at that. Um, I, I think I might vote yes. I don't know. Um, I just, I need to read a little bit more, but, I mean.
Do Burger King, sorry, do Burger Kings even look like that anymore? It seems like they're all just turning into boxes now.
They are.
Not that Mansard roof or what, that's Pizza Hut, wasn't it with that?
You're so funny.
Yeah.
But now, now they're all just turning into a box.
But it's still, I mean, we know that's a Burger King.
I know it's a Burger King, but I'm old enough to know it's a Burger King.
Exactly.
Like fifteen-year-olds know that that's a Burger King.
I don't.
I don't know. They're not renting cars anyway, because.
Correct, but that's true. But I, like, this right here, this, this exterior aesthetic, like, the changes and the shifts, I under, I can understand why these changes are being made. Um, just even the facade right here, um, to transition it, to try to be a little bit more, um, reflective of the business that Enterprise is doing. Um, I mean, I don't want to put any further impediments upon this business. Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't, that's my, that's my position on it. But I, I understand what everyone else is saying too. I think that that's a, you know, it's, it's valid, but I don't know.
I think we've all made valid.
Yes.
I have another question for Pete. Um, so if they would have kept the, um, if they wouldn't have made changes to the building and it would have stayed like the Burger King building, would signage where Burger King was, would that be grandfathered in?
It, it would not be grandfathered in because they would have to change the sign.
Okay.
And we would have looked at it as a non-conforming sign being on the roof. So, 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 yeah, so it, whether, as soon as they went to modify it, it would, that, this question would have come up.
So unless it was a Burger King.
Yeah, and, and I don't, and I don't mean to, you know, I mean, this, this is a great reuse for this property.
Yeah.
I want to say that.
Yeah.
Job with the redevelopment, you know, that's going on and adding the, uh, the detailing building behind, um, the, the former Burger King structure, which will serve as the office. So it's, it's a wonderful reuse, but the city has always taken a very firm stance on roof-mounted signs. And, uh, so, like I said, that's, so that's where staff's comments are coming from. And then as far as, you know, following Robert's rules and how to handle this situation, the board should vote on the variance as it's written. And then after that, depending on that outcome, you would, a second, um, motion could be put forward for, uh, you know, a, a, a reduced variance.
Okay.
You know, like what staff was, was suggesting. If, if that is, you know, what the board is interested in doing, but I would, like I said, you, you know, you, you know, they've, they've made this request. The board needs to vote on their request.
Okay.
And can then, you know, take action to grant a reduced variance of, of, you know, to, of their liking after that, or at least bring that to a vote.
Can I have one more question? Is this where it says, like, the facade change is no longer a part of the renovation? So these facade changes are not happening anymore? Anyway, okay, well then.
And just, and just to, just to clarify, so Ms. Harrington's looking at the original facade elevation shown.
Got it.
Okay.
That, that show boxing in, the, uh, the, the pit, angled roof.
Sorry, they were going the one.
The one that I just saw, yeah. This is what they are going to do now?
This is what they're asking for.
For now, okay. And this is what you guys were saying?
That's what I'm, would say no to.
Okay, got it.
So then the motion would be, do I need to, I would make a motion to deny the, uh, zoning variance request as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Which, which is weird because it means I'm going to be voting yes to vote no.
So, in, in, yeah, so in, in most cases, it's, it's, it causes less confusion just to move approval, even though during the discussion phase, many of the board members have indicated they, they are not in support of it. So that way, you know, a yes is to, to approve and a no is to, you know, to deny.
Okay.
Yeah, making the motion to, uh, uh, approve the variance does not obligate you to vote for it.
No, I'd.
It's just putting the issue for the board, and then you can vote how you choose.
For simplicity, I'll just modify the, who seconded it? Jeremy seconded it?
I did.
So then I would modify it to move to approve the variance as written. Would you still second that?
I still second that. I, I approve the second.
Now we're clear.
Can I get a vote? We'll start with Turpinin?
No.
Harrington?
Yes.
Holder?
I'm a no.
McReynolds?
No.
Wark? No.
I'll repeat to throw out there, if somebody wants to make a motion for some smaller, um, variance.
Would, uh, would the applicant, uh, want us to, uh, put a motion forward for a reduced variance allowing for the signage on the south-facing corridor towards Cork?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. And, uh, allowing for the one sign to be, uh, the motion that we pass through this time.
So basically what you suggested, Pete, the one sign on the front? Yeah, we would be fine with that. That's fair.
The one, to be clear, you're making a mo, you're asking him, would he be okay if you made a motion to allow him to put a sign on the roof in the front? And I think you got all the directions in there correct.
So I make, I make a motion that we approve variance allowing for the signage to be placed on the south-facing directional of the building facing East Cork Street, allowing the signage to fit within the conforms of the suggestions under the staff's suggestion.
He is referring to, I second that, by the way.
That's what he's referring to.
He's referring to basically replacing the Burger King sign or the Enterprise sign. That's what the motion is.
To be clear, it would not be mounted to the roof. It's mounted to the face.
You called it the parapet. I called it the roof.
Okay.
But yes.
Okay. All right.
Uh, I second that motion if it is already do so.
So, so for clarity, this is, this is on the south face of the roof per the staff report?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so, so I understand when you say the, what are we talking, are you saying as shown in the rendering or a different?
It would, it would be brought down height-wise to the, to where the, the Burger King channel letters were located. I know that is not desirable, but that is, you know, the, the, the staff, staff can support that but cannot support those, uh, you know, those, those sign bands any higher on the, on the roof.
To, to be clear, what I'm looking at, just on page 30 of 36 of the staff report is a photo from 2019. I believe it shows where you clearly see the Burger King sign. I'm, the motion that I've heard is to replace basically the Burger King's, I know it's not there right now. It's gone.
Can I, can I see that?
Sure. But basically to, you can come on up and have a look at it.
Is it, is it page 31 that?
Thirty.
This one?
Yeah, but are we?
This one, right?
This one. Remy's got it. Like to put it there.
Okay.
That is basically the motion.
Drop down a little bit more than page 31.
This one.
Well, that's not, that, that look is not going to be it anyway, period.
Yeah, that's what they said they're not doing.
Okay.
It's going to be.
There, I'm going to just rip this open so we can look at them easier. This is what the motion is. These are not being done. This is what they were asking for here.
This is what y'all just denied.
Right.
This is what they want, like this, but it'll look like this with this Enterprise sign, correct?
But just down here.
Down here.
But down here, okay.
Yes, and I think on one of mine, I may have drawn not very well that this sign would, is being recommended to move down.
Perfect.
Basically.
Yes.
Into that position.
Okay.
Give or take.
Yeah, good. Okay.
I like roof signs. They're cute.
Yes.
If the roof's like this, we're talking parapet, it's the leaning, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, all those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, Pete?
I'm taking a good vote.
Will you take a roll call, please?
Take a roll call.
Okay, and, so just, yeah, so just for clarity's sake, before I call the roll on this variance request, I'll, I'll just reread what, uh, the motion that was put forward by Mr. Turpinning, and, no, I'm sorry, put, put forth by Mr. Holder, seconded by Mr. Turpinning to, uh, no, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I have this backwards, don't I?
Yeah, you got it right, the, I mean.
He's the one who.
That was the first time, we're on the second one.
You, you authored it, so I've got it, I just got it reversed, okay. Well, good, glad I stopped for clarity's sake.
It's okay.
Uh, move approval of a reduced variance to allow for a sign on the south face of the roof per the staff report, which indicates where the former Burger King signage was located. Yes.
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 Okay, and now I will proceed with reading the roll call, we'll start with, with McReynolds?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Turpinning?
Yes.
Wark?
Yes. So that motion was approved? Yes, thank you. Anything else, Pete?
I do have one item for the chair.
Okay.
As of October twelfth, uh, I will be resigning my position here on the zoning board of appeals. I will be able to effectively make that meeting, but I'm putting my resignation in, in the chance that I may not, therefore, I am tendering my resignation for my seat to be filled. Thank you.
I wish we had a bylaw that you had to find a replacement before you could resign from the board.
You wanna add something?
Jeremy?
Thank you.
I can find worse than this.
Well, if that's all, um, let's adjourn our meeting.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Are you heading my way?
I am, let's go, bro.
Can I hit you right there?
You sure can, thank you guys, bye, have a good night. And Holly wanted me to call you, she's one of the girls.
Maybe not.
Not her, she is okay. Yeah, all right.
She was just calling one of us.
Yeah, that's my girl.
We pushed her there more than just Thursday, but she don't come Thursday.